Good morning, everybody. Welcome to this meeting of the Health Scrutiny Subcommittee, our first meeting of 2025/26. So I've got a few housekeeping notices before we start firstly to say that the meeting is open to the public, so a warm welcome to everybody in attendance and to anybody watching online. My name is councillor Ruth Milsom, I'm the Chair of this Health Scrutiny Subcommittee. Before we go any further, I'm going to ask Abbie, our Democratic Services Officer, to read the rest of the housekeeping.
Thank you, Chair. Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There's no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the council staff present. The assembly point is Tudor Square. The meeting today is open to the public and will be livestreamed and for subsequent broadcast via the council's website. You should be aware that the council is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during this webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering the meeting room, you are consenting to be filmed and to possible use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. So first of all, can I please ask that members and officers in attendance introduce themselves? We'll start over here.
Councillor Mary Lee at Donald Wood.
Councillor Laura McLean at Walkley Warden, I'm a substitute member of this committee. Thank you.
Councillor Ted Mallinson at Hillsborough Ward.
Councillor Steve Mairis at Great Hartwood and Deputy Chair of Health Scrutiny.
Councillor Penny Baker at Stanleyton Ward.
Abbie Hodgits, I'm the Democratic Services Team Manager and I'm clerking this meeting and my colleagues to my right will be webcasting.
Deborah Glenn, I'm the Policy Improvement Officer supporting this Subcommittee.
Thank you very much. Apologies for absence, we have received apologies from councillors Fran Belbin and John Wright. Are there any other apologies? Councillor Thornton.
She's on a honeymoon.
On honeymoon, good for her.
She's on a travelling back, actually.
I'm sure she's reading the papers while she's away. And just to mention that today, we have, well, I should thank a number of members who served on this Subcommittee during last year and have moved on to other roles, so councillor Rob Bannister, councillor Mick Rooney, councillor Anne Whitaker and councillor Julie Growcott and officially councillor Laura McLean, although she's straight back in the hot seat today as a substitute member. So thank you very much to those members for all their contributions during last year and lots of insightful comments and questions. Do we have any items for exclusion of the public in press today? We don't. Any declarations of interest from members in any of the items of business on the agenda? Okay, so item number four, minutes of the previous meeting, that's in your agenda pack, page 11. So I shall ask members to approve as a correct record the minutes of the last meeting held on the 25th of March this year. Are there any comments on the minutes? Are we happy to approve those as a correct record, those who are there at least? Yes. Okay, thank you very much. And then item number five is public questions, statements and petitions. We have none today. And members' questions, we have no new members' questions received for today. So straight on to item seven, which is the first of four quality account reports that we're receiving today. This is from Sheffield Teaching Hospitals, if our colleagues would like to take your places at the desk. And before we start with the quality account items, I did want to just say something about a couple of items that have appeared in the local press prior to the meeting, which draw attention to two, well, one aspect each in two of the reports. And just wanted to set those in context a little bit before we start. So there's been a story about, regarding the Sheffield Children's Hospital quality account, about the number of deaths of children under the care of Sheffield Children's Hospital last year. And I just wanted to draw attention to the fact that that story has appeared rather out of context and is very important for anybody who has an interest in that subject to read the rest of the report and set that information in context. And also, what we'll say when we come to that is maybe more about the history of that kind of statistic and how it is, it is not the unusual event that the press might have indicated that it is. Similarly, from Sheffield Teaching Hospitals, there was a news story there as well. And this is about never events, these are safety events that should, should not happen and from which learning is always taken. And again on that, there is a history behind the statistic that's been put in the press stories. And I'm sure our colleagues will touch on that. But just to say that this is not a sudden cause for concern and it's not something that alarms the committee and not something that we will intend to do any kind of deep dive on unless there is a good reason for that. So although those have appeared in the news, we're, as far as I'm looking at colleagues, we're not of the view that these are anything particularly significant, although very sad events. Right, so I'll hand over to our SDH colleagues, if you could introduce yourselves and tell us what your role is and then go on to your presentation. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Angie Gibbs, I'm the Quality Director for Sheffield Teaching Hospitals.
Good morning, I'm Elaine Corkhill, I'm the Deputy Chief Nurse.
So thank you for the opportunity to come and present our draft quality report. I'm only going to pull out a few things from the report for you as introduction. Firstly, pages 11 to 14 focus on our priorities for improvement. So last year, we had three priorities. One was around the assessment and management of pressure ulcers. And we were introducing a new tool, Purpose Tea, which research had shown was more effective in that. Of course, rolling it out to a very big, complex organisation is always a challenge and that was successfully achieved through the years, so we were pleased with the progress of that. The second was around improving the experience of people who are blind and visually impaired. And I'm going to take the opportunity here to thank Sheffield Royal Society for the Blind, who are absolutely amazing in supporting us with that work. They came along and did some face-to-face training for staff, they've helped the development of a visual impairment toolkit which we'll be rolling out staff next month. So we were really grateful for their support and input in that work. And finally, the third one was improving the management of acute pain for patients. Really important one, obviously a big part of patient experience. We produced a leaflet as guidance and introduced some, an interesting form of training, sort of short, five-minute bites of training that staff could access easily where there were aspects within pain and prescribing they were wanting to know more about, which was very successful. We measured this one with a patient survey, particularly before and after, and I was really pleased to see the improvements and that patients were saying, there were more patients saying they had the pain relief they felt they needed within 30 minutes and within an hour, so it was a really good piece of improvement. And that work is continuing, it's, obviously these things always require continued attention. And we started a new integrated pain group, which combines acute pain, chronic pain and palliative care pain to take, continue to take that work forward. So for this year, we will be focusing on another three quality objectives. We're going to look at trying to prevent deconditioning of patients, particularly the frail older patients, which will help maintain independence, help quicker discharge. It's, research has shown it has huge sort of benefits in helping prevent falls and things like that, so it's quite an exciting one that we're pleased to be doing. We're also increasing system-based learning, looking to focus to see how we can get the learning from our investigations to a wider range of frontline staff, which again, really important. And the other one, which I'm sure our colleagues at the Children's Hospital will think is really important, is around transition and the care for young people, because as our clients move from the Children's Hospital to us in particular, how that's done and the care and support they're given as they arrive in our organisation is really important to maintaining their health and wellbeing. As you said, four never events in the year. We had, one was a wrong-side pain injection, there was one which was a chest drain that was initially placed in the wrong side and then rectified, and two incorrect removal of lesion, which were where the patient had other lesions quite close by. All were rectified and there was learning, investigations and learning taken from those and shared. Patient experience is really important to us and how patients see. And I did want to draw out, after previous years, in terms of maternity, the improvement in the National Maternity Survey, we went up to 11th nationally, which was a really good improvement and because how the people find the service is so important, so we're really pleased with that result. And finally, I just wanted to mention the research, there's always a wealth of research going on in Sheffield Teaching Hospitals. And there's been some particular research that's been started around health inequalities, which is, we're really pleased to be engaged in. So thank you, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, that was extremely concise, thank you very much. So questions, colleagues? Councillor Eris.
Yeah. Thanks for the report. I'm just wondering how, I mean, obviously we have set our sort of work programme and look at the priorities that we have to set, so I'm just trying to get a feel for what you think are areas which you think that collaborative we can sort of look at as, you know, as part of scrutiny. And I'm just going through the, your, the objectives that you presented and I'm just wondering whether there are any, I mean, you've, you've mentioned the, let me get my notes, I've got some notes here somewhere. Yeah, you mentioned the 30-minute trust target. How confident are you that that, that objective will be achieved? I'm putting, I'm thinking in the context of the changes that are coming down from national government about the restructuring of NHS England and so on, all the restructuring that we will have to be considering as a local authority. Do you feel that your objectives will be achievable within the timeline that you, the trust is set? I think that's an overall question, I think, I wanted to ask about the, yeah, and on that theme, the, you reported out from where it is, the accessible information recording standard, that to be a legal requirement, oh, it was introduced by, sorry, it was introduced by NHS England as a legal requirement in 2016. I'm just wondering, in terms of the, the changes that were still a bit unclear as to, as, you know, the overall changes regarding the governance and that, who will actually oversee that? Do you have any idea on who will actually oversee that accessible information recording standard? Talking about people for, you know, sort of visual impairment and so on, was a set standard, isn't it, that we had to achieve? So I just wonder whether you can just elaborate that, so really, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Can I just seek clarity on the one about the 30-minute target? Was that about the pain objective?
Yeah, the pain, the pain relief.
Right, so we did, we have achieved that. It is about maintaining it now, so the new group will be keeping an eye, our new integrated pain group will continue to monitor that and we'll run another patient survey next year to continue to monitor that one. In terms of the changes in the structure in NHS England, will that affect our objectives? I don't think it'll affect the objectives we've set, because we will continue to drive those forward and work on them regardless of what's happening nationally. And the same with the accessible information standard, we know what the standard was, there is a reason behind this standard, we're going to keep driving at that and keep working at it for our patients regardless of where it's assessed nationally. I don't yet know how it will be monitored nationally and if it will continue to be, but we will continue to work at it. You did ask also about areas Health Scrutiny could focus on, always a difficult one. I suppose for me, one would be discharge. There is something about how we get, help patients to get home quicker, get back to, get into intermediate care if that's needed quicker, that's always a challenge and it's a challenge that does affect the flow through our hospital. So that would always be a good one. And I'm sure the lead on our, the one for young people and transition, she's very passionate and would be, always be delighted to talk further on that.
Thank you, Councillor Lee.
Thanks. I'm just interested in the, the work you're doing with people who are very frail, because obviously you've said, as you said, you know, a frail person that comes into hospital quickly and deteriorates if they're not, if that isn't, those issues are not addressed. And there's obviously a lot of measures you're doing here and monitoring about how, what practical steps would be, will happen on a ward, a very busy ward where nurses are really, really busy, to get people up and dressed and able to walk to the toilet themselves or taking them to, taking them to the toilet with, if a nurse can take them to the toilet. What are those, you know, there's a lot of practical difficulties and how will you address that actually day to day or hour to hour on a ward?
I'll take this one. I think in terms of, from a nursing point of view, in terms of our vacancy position is, is really good in terms of we've got minimal vacancies. So our wards at the moment in terms of their staffing is in a very positive position. I think the deconditioning piece of work that we're going to take forward in terms of trying to get patients up is linked into a Nurse Midwifery Proud Improvement Plan, which has been led by a number of nurse directors across the organisation, who will work with the ward-based nurses to see how best that that can work in terms of moving it forward. There's another project that we're doing around decaffeinated coffee as well, drinks for frail elderly patients, which is, we're just trying to evaluate that now in terms of the pilot and it's showing some positive results in terms of giving patients decaffeinated drinks, stopping them from trying to get up to go to the toilet. So it's hopefully reducing the number of falls that patients have when they're in wards as well. So there'll be a whole quality improvement project that's wrapped around that deconditioning priority.
And just to add, we are taking, the nurse directors are also reporting into one of our quality meetings about the work that they're doing in their individual areas. And we actually heard earlier this week from one where they've been looking at the board rounds they do to increase the multidisciplinary nature, so deconditioning gets addressed on the board rounds as they go round.
What you're saying is that possibility of deconditioning, that will be a priority as soon as somebody's maybe admitted to hospital and goes through the range of assessments and diagnosis? Okay, thanks.
Councillor McLean.
Thank you, thank you for your report. It's really good to hear some of the positive things you mentioned, particularly the one around maternity survey, it's just really good to hear. I just had a question about the complaint, number of complaints, it's page 37 of your report and page 57 of our pack. And I can see there's been a bit of an increase from last year to this year, from 3,660 to 4,241. I just wondered if you knew what the reason for that increase was, is it just better, you know, it's more easy for people to make complaints or are there other things going on there? It'd just be good to hear your reflections, thank you.
It's a bit of a million-dollar question, really. So yes, I think first, I'd like to say, people complaining isn't, it's a bad thing if they're unhappy, but I'm really pleased that people take the time to let us know, so we can actually look to address the issues. We particularly saw an increase in informal concerns raised, that was the biggest increase that we were able to address, whereas the, the number of formal complaints hasn't significantly, statistically significantly altered. But we have been obviously working on those. The highest theme has really been around waiting times and obviously that's been a big focus for us, is trying to bring those waiting times down and we continue to work on that.
Yeah, thank you very much for the report and everything, I think there's a huge amount of work that's been done and continues to be done, which is brilliant. I think one thing you mentioned, I'm really pleased to hear about research into health inequality and we're going to be discussing that in this committee next year, which so that really ties in, so we're looking forward to that discussion and really pleased that you're looking into that. My question really is around the sort of, the transitions that you mentioned as being one of the four focuses that you're having. It's obviously critical, well, important that people don't fall between stools, heaven forbid, or, and it's also important that they don't end up having to duplicate paperwork or keep saying the same story again and against different professionals. And so I'm just asking if you could elaborate a little bit more on what work's going to be done to ensure that with other providers, there's a sort of seamless transition, there's so many other providers, obviously, you know, how are you going to manage that and so on? Thank you.
Thank you. So we already have a small transition team that work with the complex patients, so we already support those reasonably well. The concern is, is more about the wealth of others who don't quite fit into the complex and as you say, we don't want anyone to fall through the gaps. It's been helpful that there's been a couple of national pieces of work, there was an NCPOD study into transition and a piece of NICE guidance that we were able to look through and self-assess. There's some work going on regionally as well to set out a kind of, this is how we're going to do transition, which has been helpful. In the trust itself, we're going to focus on this year, this is actually going to be a two-year objective, so we're going to start focusing with some primary areas, looking at what can be done with a point of building a framework that will basically say, this is how we should do transition across our organisation, that we can then roll out to all areas. And it's, it's things like understanding when young people don't come, it's not quite the same as when an adult doesn't come and how that's treated needs to be slightly different. It's about consideration of, do some young people need longer time in clinic? So there's a wealth of smaller things that need to be looked at, that we can then put together in a framework that will support that work.
Thank you. The, is the closure and ending of National Health England going to have an impact on that or is that not relevant?
Do you know, it's really difficult in a way to answer, because in terms of the work we do internally, it won't. We have a very enthusiastic lead for it, who will drive it and we will, we will get there. What I don't, always can't, can't know is what NHS England may have done or the guidance or work, work streams they may have done, which could have helped inform or guide. So in that respect, you never know what, what may have been done that you then miss. But in terms of what we've planned, no, that will continue to be driven.
Is it, was it on that topic, Steve?
A quick comment, yeah, it's observation more than a question. Of course, the, the parent, our parent policy committee has produced the All-Age Autism Strategy, which is due to go to Children's Subcommittee, sorry, Children's Policy Committee, and then we sign it off our parents committee shortly, so I'm just conscious that you should have an input into that, really.
Hello. So I want to go back to the, sort of around visually, the visually impaired communication improvement, that's, I mean, that's, it's under last year, but you're continuing that work and I think still developing the toolkit, is that still, that's still under development, isn't it? And I, I mean, I've, I've had some contact with the Sheffield Royal Society for the Blind and they have, they're nothing but complimentary about that co-production work, which is really, really good to, to see. So they, they've been really thrilled to be part of that. And I'd like to note, you know, that they're very complimentary about that kind of co-production and we've talked about co-production before, you know, when we've met you in different contexts and it is so important. And one thing that I hope, you know, is getting embedded in everything really now, so that's a really good exemplar, isn't it, of how that's worked? Slightly aside, well, sort of expanding on that, also had conversations with Disability Sheffield, to sort of, you know, check in with them occasionally to see what's on the radar. And I understand there, there is a little bit of concern coming from members of the public about accessibility to disabled parking around the estates and so just wondered what, what kind of priority treatment that's receiving, just to make sure that that doesn't become any kind of permanent problem. And just really concerned as well that when organisations like Royal Society for the Blind, Disability Sheffield, any other charity or voluntary organisation is, we want, we want people to be involved in co-production, but it can come at with a cost. I just wondered what, what your consideration around that is when other groups are involved in, you know, co-producing with you something that you really want to get better. Are costs covered for those organisations or is there a way of looking at that?
Thank you. So we, we have a guide on co-production for staff that was produced this year. I genuinely don't know if it does mention cost, obviously if, if individuals or a group mentioned a cost as a barrier, we would look at, you know, covering expenses, but we haven't set it out in a formal way. And also thank you for bringing that accessibility parking to my attention. The estates team are separate to us, but I will talk to them and ask them what's being done about that.
I wanted to just probe ever so slightly more on a couple of little things about the never events. So I do think it's important that we have some context around this and I look, so I look back at the figures from previous years, going back to 2019, 20, nine never events in that year, then going forward in years, three, then six, then eight, then four and four again last year. So the four reported in this last year is not extraordinary at all and I do want to just re-emphasise that in, you know, in the light of what's appeared in the press. Obviously, you're always striving for that to be zero, but I'm also aware that no NHS trust in the country has reported zero never events, that's, that's not happened. So in terms of national data... Um, so in the, in terms of national data, um, you know, with the way, how you benchmark against um national data is not is not at all bad. You know, the worst I think I saw was thirteen never events last year from one trust. So that puts your four in context, these are things we never want to happen at all, but, you know, the context is important. Um, so uh I just wanted to to highlight that really, having said that, the expenditure on legal claims um is is something of a drain, I guess, and I just wondered if you could comment about about that and the impact that that has and what you could do to address that.
Thank you, um, and thank you for the context around the never events and of course we don't want to see them and we always focus on detailed investigations to look at system methods that we can do to really reduce the risk further. Um, in terms of legal costs, these legal costs go up, have been going up nationally, um, and we've been affected like other organisations. And it is always a challenge, um, when I look at the amount we pay for the legal premium. Yes, I would rather spend that on frontline staff, to be fair. Um, and I certainly, if if we have harmed somebody, I I do not begrudge them getting suitable recompense for that harm. Um, but it is always a drain on resources when the legal costs.
Okay, um, just wanted to talk about infection control and this is something that will feed into a discussion we're doing September with the Subcommittee around Winter Planning and, um, you know, infection control comes very much into that. Just wondered if if um, if you're ha- kind of happy with the situation with infection control or whether there are any uh improvements that you could see in the next year and particularly thinking about winter. Um, are there any improvements that would, um, I mean, obviously your report will always talk a lot about what happens in hospital, but I think we're also concerned with keeping people out of hospital and not and people not becoming more ill when they're in hospital by acquiring an infection, um, so I don't know if you've got any comments about that at this point?
Okay, um, in terms of, there's a lot of work going on around infection prevention and control. Um, and we've got a robust um action plan in terms of um for this year that we're focused on. I think there's particular pieces of work around peripheral cannula care and urinary catheters and trying to standardise the practice and aseptic technique and improve the education and training for staff as well to try to reduce um some of our infections. There's a huge amount of work that goes on across the organisation in relation to um the managing of outbreaks of um flu, norovirus and um C. diff as well. And obviously we've got um got a Director of Infection Prevention and Control that work quite closely with and a nurse consultant as well. Um, and and they work very closely with Clinical Ops in terms of a deep, having a deep clean programme that's implemented. So at the moment, we've got one of our wards that's been decanted and has been deep cleaned in preparation for winter coming as well, so. Um, fortunately, at the moment, our operational position is very good, so we're we were able to get on with that deep clean programme throughout the summer in preparation for the winter.
And and do you work in partnership with other um healthcare settings across the city? So is that, you know, is there one joined up strategy here that helps to keep people out of hospitals? So we want fewer fluid missions and fewer norovirus admissions. Um, that doesn't just depend on you because, you know, that's what you do in hospital, it's dependent on the whole healthcare system and what measures are taken in other settings um to prevent spread and I mean, that goes right down to schools and everything. Um, so how much, to what extent do you work across across the piece with other partners?
So because we've got a combined community um care group that they work very closely with um the community services as well. Um, and um, and and we have got um IPC nurses that outreach into the community services to work closely with them to provide education and training for staff as well.
Okay, thanks, right, in in view of time, one very quick one to be in that I think will sum up.
It's just to say, um, I fully support Council Malinsen's comments about the uh never events and stuff, thank you.
Furiously scribbling things down because I'm aware that we've got to be quite a quick turnaround with our comments, which are due back to you on the ninth. Um, so we'll do our best, thank you ever so much for coming to present, I know it's rather short and sharp today and there's a lot of information. Um, but, um, you know, we're looking forward to future discussions, especially around the winter planning um in September and um elective waiting lists, I think, as well, we're discussing at that point, so we'll hear more about those then. Thank you ever so much both.
Thank you very much.
And members, we need to do a very quick summary, we're not going to write our report right here and now, but Deborah and I will um pull a report uh together to to send our feedback to SDH. Um, so if there are any comments you want to make right now, we've both been scribbling things down, hopefully nothing will be missed. But if there's anything you want to particularly highlight that you'd like to see in our feedback, now is the time, Council Malinsen.
It's just about transitions, it's um an issue for all of us, isn't it? I mean, obviously it's very particular in some settings that, you know, specific, but it is. Um, transitions for us, you know, for in particular learning disabilities, but I know in children's mental health services. So any shared learning, um, in a general sort of sense to do with not just the child but also parents and carers, that would be really I'm sure there's some collaboration will be taking place, but that would be, I think, really important for us. And it's similar with health inequalities, you know, it besets us, you know, greatly in the council about health inequalities and inequalities generally, so anything, any way we collaborate, that would be also really important.
I I think I'll add to that also the infection control, that shared learning is um something that I think we'd like to see some strength in there, um. Anything else that was mentioned, Steve?
Well, I think we always have discharge on our horizon, don't we?
If anything else occurs to you regarding that report, please, if you could email by the end of the day um to Deborah if possible, although you're hoping to get the reports all all signed off by the end of this week, aren't you? Yeah, so if anything else occurs, please just quickly email Deborah and we'll make sure it gets included, thank you ever so much. Okay, so just our formal recommendations on the last item is to note the content of the quality account. Discuss and make comments on the report to be fed back to Sheffield Teaching Hospitals by the deadline of the ninth of June, are we happy with that? Okay, on to the next item then, which is the quality account from Sheffield Children's Hospital. So welcome to all three of you and thank you for giving up your time today and um coming to present to us, we can see Yvonne's name. Have you got the right cards there? We've got Geoff, Craig, well, introduce yourself loudly and clearly, Craig, and then we'll remember who you are.
Good morning, everyone, I'm Craig Redford, Chief Operating Officer at the Children's.
Morning, everyone, I'm Yvonne Millard and I'm the Chief Nurse.
Good morning, my name's Jeff Paring, I'm the Executive Medical Director.
Great, go ahead with your report, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you for the time to consider our draft quality accounts today. Um, we plan to go through a little about our achievements against last year's accounts and then talk you through the coming years. Um, I think it's, we would like to begin by telling you a little bit about the organisation and I say that because uh that it, there may be a perception that Sheffield Children's is Sheffield Children's Hospital. We are Sheff- Sheffield Children's, we are an integrated trust. Part of our trust includes uh health visitors, school nurses, uh therapies, community sites, tertiary services such as neurosurgery and critical care, community and mental health services, that includes community care day patient and inpatient, and it also includes palliative and end-of-life care and bereavement services. So we are more than a an acute hospital. We are absolutely committed to continually improving patient safety and the quality of care across all of our services. We considered last year's priorities and we have done the same with this year's by reviewing all of the national improvement standards and targets, listening to issues and feedback from our children, young people, family, carers and our colleagues. We've identified themes for quality and safety and we've also considered this using our strategic direction of our quality promise and caring together strategies. So I'll go through last year's priorities briefly. So the first priority we had was to improve our awareness and recognition of sepsis. That included particularly timely and effective escalation of treatment, improving colleague awareness, the tools that we use to spot sepsis and our access to guidelines and escalation pathways. It was a significant focus over the last year and I would like to give you some examples of what we've achieved. We have published and shared widely our new deteriorating child policy. We have produced a sepsis human factors video, Martha's Rule Pilot is underway. And we are involved in education across Sheffield in collaboration with Early Help Partnership Services, which directs families to resources. Our second priority was to improve our bereavement services and that included our families having access to timely, kind and efficient support that meets their needs. We are here when they need us, an equitable and personalised service following any bereavement. We've built on several improvements already made through our quality improvement approach to ensure that families receive equitable and personalised support following the death of their child. Some example of those are, we refreshed our core bereavement services, meeting best practice standards. We appointed two new colleagues into the service. We have developed a suite of standard operating procedures which will provide consistency and clarity of offer. And we also now now work very closely with Blue Bell Wood, um, who provide additional support for families, including memory making and bereavement support for extended family members such as grandparents. I'm going to hand to Craig to touch on waiting well.
Thanks, Yvonne, so the third priority from last year was supporting patients and families whilst they were waiting for care. As Yvonne alluded to in her introduction, we see many thousands of patients through various different settings each year, so just some examples is we saw sixty-two thousand patients through our emergency department last year, nearly four hundred thousand through our outpatient appointments and nearly twenty-eight thousand through our community settings, um, whilst our, relatively speaking, our waiting times are good, obviously there's still a requirement for patients to wait. Um, that wait varies by service, positively our physical health waiting times reduced last year, the the overall size of the waiting list came down by around fifteen hundred patients. However, for some of our other waiting lists, neurodevelopmental services in particular, that waiting, the waiting list have gone up during that period of time. It's therefore really important that we're supporting patients and families as much as we can whilst they wait and there's various different reasons for that. That includes updating people around the length of those waiting times, um, so they are aware of them and can can make informed decisions. We, so that we can signpost to other services whilst they might be able to get support whilst they wait. Um, it's to provide overall guidance um around overall health things, just all all hygiene, physical exercise and how to prepare for when patients actually do come in and do attend, either throughout patients, through theatres or elsewhere. Um, we did a lot of things through last year, it's an evolving um picture, assess certainly with what's available digitally now, what we can do with that. But what we do for all of our physical health waits is every patient gets a a confirmation text message with regard to that their referral is been received and that they're on that waiting list. Within that, it directs them to the information about the waiting times and also for some of our services, we now have something called e-meet and greet, which allows us to offer more bespoke services per specialty, so and exactly, there's many examples included within the report, one I'd choose would be around nephrology, where we talk to patients around making sure that they're able to bring their samples in on time and keeping bladder diaries and those kind of things, so that when patients turn up, we can get the most from that outpatient appointment. Um, we've also really keen to support patients while they wait in those neurodevelopmental services, it's quite a complex uh process. Um, so we've been working with the Power of Care Forum to agree um how we will um roll out the same process as for our physical health waits and the pilot for that will go live uh next week. Um, we've also published various FAQ questions on our website, particularly around neurodevelopmental, to support patients while they uh while they wait, um, so that's some of the things we've taken forward uh this year.
Uh, so if we come on to our priorities for the coming year, um, they're all based around our quality promise, which is to provide safe, kind and outstanding care to the children, young people and families that we serve. Uh, we're going to go through them in turn, I'll tell you what they all are in advance though, the first one will be clinical record keep- keeping, which is our safe priority, transition, informed from listening to children, young people and families, which is our kind priority. And continue to implement the Waiting Well project with a specific focus on neurodisability, which is our outstanding priority. So I'll hand first to Geoff for clinical record keeping.
Thank you, clinical record keeping was selected as a priority following a number of recent reviews and investigations which showed that this was an area for improvement. Whilst we do not have a full electronic patient record system that covers the whole of the trust and will not be implementing one imminently, there is much we can do to improve our standards of record keeping and the governance of those records. This is the work that we'll be undertaking this year. Where we can increase our reliance on electronic systems, we will do so, as in the delivery of electronic observations in our CAMHS inpatient unit and electronic care plans and risk assessments on our acute sites. Where we will still have paper-based records, we will work to ensure that they are of the highest possible standards through rolling out mini audits and walk-arounds to check their quality. This work will be overseen by a clinical records committee, which will have an updated remit to cover this work.
Thank you, Geoff, um, I'll then talk to transition, so as you've heard, this is a joint quality priority with Sheffield Teaching Hospital, however, we will ensure that we consider healthcare transition for all of our young people as we also offer tertiary healthcare to children and young people who live outside of Sheffield and transition to other healthcare providers. We have selected this priority because the time of transition from child to adult healthcare services is of crucial importance, both to the individual and their families, but also to the longer-term health outcomes and wider system costs. Young people with chronic health conditions are known to be more likely to use emergency rather than planned services, have the highest proportion of did-not-attend rates and have the highest levels of co-existing mental health difficulties. Uh, as part of this, under the themes below, we will enhance the quality of the monthly transition data sets and associated processes, identify our population aged eighteen plus to capture and highlight risks and barriers for safe and timely transition, continue to support complex transition for young people with more than three chronic conditions, with specific group meetings to plan and deliver individualised care, and establish robust mechanisms to capture patient experience of that transition to infer, inform further service development. And now finally I'll hand to Craig.
Thanks, Yvonne, um, so the third priority for this year is a continuation of what I talked about previously. Um, again, this is important because of the digital advancements, also um for the the newer patients coming on to the waiting list. So the the three main things we're going to take forward is the text communications I alluded to earlier will be rolled out for all follow-up appointments, not just news as we currently do. And then secondly, with system partners, we aim to roll out a suite of communications linked to neurodevelopmental services around the services available across the city. And then thirdly, we'll continue to work with our clinical teams and listen to feedback from patients around other things we can do to improve our communication whilst they wait. So they, the three priorities for twenty-five. So the three priorities for 25, 26. In terms of the rest of the report, it follows the normal format of previous years, but we've listened to last year's feedback from this committee and other stakeholders and we've hopefully enhanced the sections linked to research and innovation, safeguarding and patient engagement and experience. As the chair mentioned at the start, we particularly just wanted to address the section related to deaths. So I'll pass over to Geoff for that please.
Thank you. First of all, can we say that the death of any child is devastating? And our thoughts are always with the families and loved ones of those who've experienced this. In the last year, there have been 41 deaths of children who died either in Sheffield Children's or were being cared for by the trust. This is the same number of children who died the previous year and is in keeping with the last five years of our care. Of these children, half of the deaths were what could be described as expected in that the child had a life limiting condition and at some point would have been expected to die. For these children, the important aspect is our palliative care services so that they can die preferably at home with their families but with the care that they need to make the death as painless and as comforting as possible. There were 25 deaths in hospital, which equates to 0.1% or one in a thousand admissions to our acute sites. Twenty of these children died in intensive care, which is a regional service caring for children across Sheffield, South Yorkshire and beyond in association with our colleagues, particularly in Leeds, who also have a paediatric intensive care unit. The paediatric intensive care unit takes the sickest of children and these children are transferred into our hospital for their ongoing care. Having said all of this, we have a responsibility to review the care of every child who dies, to understand if there were any modifiable factors that would have improved the care provided or the experience of the child and their family, both before and after the child's death. And we have a duty to make sure that these lessons are learned and embedded for our future work. To end this presentation, we've received feedback on this draft report from our colleagues in the ICB and would welcome your comments and questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Just to pick up on the last point. Again, I've looked back at previous data, which is really, I think, something that the story that appeared first in the Sheffield Star has been widespread in other news channels. Something that really that story ought to have done to set the context. I think just stating there have been over 40 deaths under the care of Sheffield Children's Hospital is deeply unhelpful. And I would urge our colleagues in local media channels to take a lot more care over how they present that kind of news because it really can be very distressing for people and that's bringing up those 41 deaths for those families again, out of the blue, which is quite insensitive to my mind. So just to put that on the record. And that 41 deaths is not unusual. And we have to bear that in mind and it's a very, very low number of patient safety incidents as well, considering how many patients you treat. And the number of safety incidents resulting in severe harm or death, again, is extremely low. Well, well under half of 1% of all incidents that result in severe harm or death. So very, very important to have that context out there. Any questions from colleagues?
Thank you. Thanks for your report today. I was just interested in what you were talking about Geoff, about the electronic record keeping, about it's difficult to do that across the trust and there's no plans to do that imminently. I just wondered what the barriers were to implementing that sort of system? Would that be helpful if it could happen? Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have implemented an electronic patient record system in our CAMHS and community services. That does work although there are, once you've implemented, there are ongoing issues to maintain it. We would like eventually to introduce a full electronic patient record system, but that requires a significant amount of work and time to actually implement it. And the way that we would be wanting to do that is to to look at other people who have implemented it and then to take forward the lessons that they've learnt in their implementation. What we are doing is introducing electronic support. So a sort of partial implementation of electronic patient records. And over time, we've increased more and more of that and that is supporting our colleagues in the work that they're doing.
Yeah, just want to, thanks for the report as well. It's really good. And I just want to concur with councillor Nelson's comments about the press. And coming back to councillor McLean's question. When they're talking about this electronic support, does that involve records actually being kept and passed on between professionals so that someone can log into a patient and see what treatment that they've been able to access to and so on?
So one of the first areas that we introduced was electronic handovers to make sure that we could pass on information between colleagues as we're going from one sort of one group of people who are looking after a child to the next group. So with people working shift patterns etc, it's a very good way of being able to do that. And what we've done is move from paper-based handover sheets to an electronic system. So that was one of the first things that we put in. We've moved now towards electronic prescribing as well and that's done on our awards. We now need to move it into our outpatients as well. So we're moving forwards slowly but surely, making sure that each area is, or each piece that we introduce is well embedded before we move on to the next thing.
So would you say you're evolving a system?
So it's evolving, but it won't ever be a complete electronic patient record system in its current format. We would have to move to something else eventually.
I've got a separate question if I could just ask it. The previous report talked about never events. I'm a bit of an novice around that sort of terminology. It's not mentioned in your reports. Can you elaborate on whether they occur in children's or why?
We, excuse me. I'm trying to, we have very few never events. When we do have a never event, we undertake what used to be a serious incidents investigation and now is a patient safety incidents investigation to ensure that that the, you know, that we get the learning from that. But the best thing that we can do, and I'm sure everyone would agree for never events, is to try and prevent them in the first place. And so we have done a lot of work, for example, in theatres where we have done the WHO checklist and we do stop before you block, which for the anaesthetist to make sure that people are not doing wrong side surgery or doing wrong side injections of local anaesthetic, for example. So the best things that we can be doing is actually putting in processes and systems to actually prevent it happening in the first place. That's not to say we will never get one, because we will and we have had them. But we need to do whatever we can to minimise the risk of them happening.
Okay. Are they recorded in the quality, I can't remember the saying of the quality report maybe?
We didn't have any for the last year.
I wanted to ask about Waiting Well. Having got much time to delve into it, it would be a whole, it would be a whole nother topic, but I just wanted to comment that I think there could be perhaps a bit more data that sort of assesses the overall effectiveness of that initiative. Potentially that's something we might want to hear about more in the future. But also sort of about practical support, what the Waiting Well really looks like for a patient, for example, waiting a long time for an elective or in the neurodiverse service. And what sort of really sits within that Waiting Well in terms of social prescribing, getting fit for surgery, staying fit when, you know, when your health isn't the best, emotional support, wraparound support for the family, that sort of thing. Avoiding mental ill health through, you know, through having a health condition that's remaining unaddressed. So all of that, I'd be very interested to hear a bit more about that. I don't know whether we might want to consider looking at that in our work programme, but Waiting Well is certainly a thread that runs through a lot of what we've been looking at. I suppose as a necessary, you know, correlation to the fact that a lot of people are waiting. So yeah, it might be good to hear more about that in the future. Also, just wanted to pick up about the staff satisfaction survey and congratulate you really on this. So I think this ranks you something like the top five of similar trusts nationally in terms of 73% of staff recommending the trust as a place to work. So huge congratulations on that because we've talked about retention, recruitment and retention a lot across NHS services in the last few years. So that sounds like you've made strides in that respect. I guess in terms of continuing to build on those strengths, I wonder what you've got in mind such as, you know, building on inclusivity and flexible working and things like that that can really, really help staff to feel at home in their jobs.
So I can touch on some elements of that. So yeah, we're incredibly proud of the results. We were also the top performing trust in the North East and Yorkshire region. So you've mentioned our vacancy rates. Our vacancy rate is actually 35 people, which is 3.6% is our nursing workforce vacancy. So it is very low. In our results as well, we do score highly in our inclusivity results as well. We have a number of networks in our inclusivity programme. The people programme leads the workforce strategy really, including the results. It's led by our chief people officer, Nick Parker, and it is a number one priority for the organisation. We fully recognise that the care that we give comes down to the people that give that care. So we want to keep the best people, attract the best people. And so we've got a fairly robust five-year plan, but we're really happy to come back and share or talk that through more.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay. In which case, thank you very much for the report and we wish you all the best for the next year as you go into your new priorities. We'll have a quick discussion with members about our feedback, but thank you very much for your time. So our feedback is due tomorrow for this report. So are there any comments that members would like to make? Anything you'd specifically like to see included in that feedback? Okay. So trusting that Deborah and I have scribbled down everything that we need to from that discussion. If anything else occurs to you again, just email quickly to Deborah before the end of the day. All right. Just going to take a very quick water break. Okay. So our next item is the quality account from Sheffield Health and Social Care NHS Trust. Colleagues presenting on that at present. We should find your name cards on there. Okay. So welcome to both of you. If you'd like to introduce yourselves and tell us what your roles are in the trust and then just go on to your presentation. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Caroline Johnson. I'm the Executive Director of Nursing Quality and Professions at Sheffield Health and Social Care.
And good morning everybody. My name's Tanya Baxter and I'm the Head of Clinical Governance and Risk.
Okay. So what I'd like to do is just take you through some of the highlights of our quality account. What I'd like to draw your attention to first, and it isn't on this presentation, is within the quality account, there is a patient story. And I think that really does encapsulate kind of our ethos within the trust and that sense of co-production and working with our service users and carers to actually continually improve. And you'll notice that it was a balanced story. We absolutely recognise that there are things that as a trust, we need to continue to improve. So we really wanted to hear the voice of Pascal within that quality account to frame the whole account. So there's been a lot of things that we've done over the last year and these are just some of the highlights. One of the first things we did was we achieved stage one of the triangle of care. And the triangle of care ensures that working between the organisations, so the practitioners within the organisation, carers and the service user. So working together to absolutely ensure that care is where care needs to be. And we achieved stage one, which was within the inpatient services. And currently, we're just going through our stage two, which is within our community services. So we'll be submitting that accreditation within the next month. We're really proud of that. And we've actually just been accepted into a programme nationally where we'll then be aligning the patient and carer basic quality framework into the triangle of care. So that's really exciting. We'll be a project pilot site across the country. We've done a lot of work within the trust, improving our therapeutic environments. So we've completed a number of the wards and areas across the trust and we're just about to embark on our next major refurbishment of Maple Ward, which will see a significant investment in a therapeutic environment, ligature-free environment for our male patients across the city. We've done a lot of work investing in waiting less, Waiting Well initiatives, specialist psychotherapy services successfully reduced weights at every single point within the system, which is superb. And we launched our Culture of Care Programme, which is within our inpatient services. And that looks at how we can improve the experience of care for both our service users and also our staff. It's working together to actually improve care. We've reduced the number of seclusions from 45, well, up to 45 a month to less than five. And in fact, in February, we had zero seclusions across the trust, which was a significant achievement. And you think where the trust was to where the trust is now. We have a very strong ethos around least restrictive practice and that's been achieved through co-production with our service users. Changes in the environment, we've reduced our seclusion rooms. So we don't have as many seclusion rooms across the trust because our aspiration will be to eventually reduce to zero seclusions. So I think that is a notable improvement. We had a number of quality objectives over the previous year around sexual safety, neurodivergence, dementia and patient level reporting. And I'll take you through some highlights of those. So around sexual safety, we're tackling this from both the sexual safety of our service users but also our staff because we recognise that our staff's safety is also at times compromised from a sexual safety perspective. So we've got a very active working group that's linked to the project management office and that oversees the sexual safety work stream. One of the key elements is that we've developed a sexual safety dashboard, which is reporting against the national standards to enable us to have that oversight. And what we've done alongside that is really raise the profile of the importance of reporting sexual safety. No matter how small the incident might have been, we want that reported. So actually what we've seen is an increase in our reporting, which, you know, on the surface it, you might think, well, that's increased incidents. What actually we've increased is the visibility of those incidents, no matter how small. So it could be a verbal issue. So it could be a verbal issue, it could be that somebody says something inappropriate. That could be within the context of their, you know, mental health difficulties. They might be a bit disinhibited, for example, but we capture all of that data because we want to understand and learn so that we know what some of the causes of the behaviours that we might be seeing across the organisation are, so that we can target those behaviours and reduce the incidents and improve the safety of both our staff and patients. We work with senior nursing practitioners to embed the ward safety charters, sexual safety charters, and improve psychological safety to report. We've built a lot of relationships across the sectors. So we're very proud within SHSC for our community connections across all diverse cultures across the community. And we're using those connections to really understand the diverse needs of our, the population that we serve and some of the issues that those populations, diverse populations we serve are facing within our organisation. From a neurodivergence perspective, one of the things we've done is looked at our staff competence. What is the baseline confidence that they've got in terms of working with autism with the aim of addressing training gaps and needs? And I think we're on that journey, the main element of that will occur in this next quality account. But we've been doing all the work to prepare for that across this next year. We've developed a community of practice for autism in conjunction with the Quality Improvement Team. We're undertaking environmental assessments. So one of the things we want to do is to ensure that our environments are autism-friendly. And we just might actually this last week, actually not this Monday ago, where we're opening a new ward, when we move into our refurbished ward, we are opening a new ward for female patients. And as part of all of our developments, we're looking at how can we make our environments autism-friendly? So that is being built into the design processes. So it's about not only how we work in our practice, but how we design our environments to meet the needs. We're rolling out co-produced and co-facilitated National Autism Trainer Programme. Crucially, we work with experts by experience. I've been with the organisation about six months. And one of the things that's incredibly impressed me is how we really have an embedded culture around experts by experience. We work alongside and with our experts by experience to really ensure that we're meeting the needs of the population we serve. There are many of our governance forums and are actively holding us to account and asking the difficult questions. From a dementia perspective, we've creating over this next year a dementia task force, which will feed into really a lot of the transformation and improvement work that we're doing across our older people's services, looking at how we deliver care differently to meet the needs of our population that we serve. Thinking about how we can think a little bit differently about all age services across the trust. And then specifically around dementia, how do we connect in with the community? And how do we think differently about how we support people within their own homes and within care homes? We're enabling a work stream led by relationships that we've developed with Dementia UK, Schindig, Alzheimer's Society and voluntary organisations to ensure that we understand the needs of the population that we're serving. And we've identified work stream leads to be able to do that. There's a lot of work that we're doing around our dementia services, our dementia offer across the city. And you'll see that as the next year comes, really, really grow. Dementia is something that I'm particularly passionate about. Patient level reporting, as I mentioned before, we've recruited and we continue to recruit lived experience expertise for that not to be tokenistic, for that to be absolutely embedded in everything we do. And we've done a lot of work around ensuring that we capture the experience of our service users and carers. And we've refreshing at the moment some of our structures to do that and some of the ways in which we capture our data and report our data and include that within our continual improvement. We have co-designed the dashboards so that actually we're using the voice of our patients in a way that our service users, carers really want us to use that voice. So it really is reflected in everything that we do. We have that within our integrated performance report and we're continuing to nuance that. We're looking at improving, now we've got our electronic record system. We've just implemented our new patient record system in March and that gives us a greater ability to have patient-reported outcome measures within the system, capture that data and use to ensure that we're continually monitoring the effectiveness of our services and uses that to improve. So I'll just move on to our quality priorities going forward. And that's not to say that any of the things that I've just mentioned won't be continuing to be worked on. But these are some of the things that our service users, carers, staff have told us that are really important and also our data is telling us. So quality objective one really looks at our Culture of Care programme that I mentioned earlier, looking at how we continue to improve. And what Culture of Care does is we have that real co-production at ward level. We have a number of initiatives that are developed by the wards with our service users and carers to be able to improve the experience. So things around restrictive practices I mentioned, how we work with our service users from different diverse populations, how we ensure that our staff are psychologically safe and supported to care, how we improve our systems and processes. There's a wide range of elements within that. And crucially, running through all that we do links into actually, I'll skip to objective three actually, because human rights runs through all of that. We are really proud to say that we have a human rights officer working within the organisation who really strongly holds the mirror around human rights. And he's on many, many forums, he works very closely with our service users and carers, he works very closely with the restrictive practice agenda. And we are ensuring that that human rights element is absolutely front and centre through everything that we do. Just going back to quality objective two, one of the big pieces of work that we are doing at the moment is around our risk management and intensive assertive review. We will obviously all be aware of the really tragic incidents that occurred in Nottingham with Valdo Calcane a couple of years ago. And the reports that have been subsequently produced as a result of that demonstrate the importance of really robust risk assessment and how we work with families and really work in a personalised way to ensure that we support our service users and their families in ensuring that we manage the risks that they present. And that is really important to also stress, that the majority of our service users do not present a significant risk to the communities that, within which they live. They are a very small proportion. Nevertheless, when things go wrong, they go horribly wrong. And it's important that we really ensure that risks are managed. And actually, we don't let the service users down because actually, if we manage, if we support them to manage their risks effectively, they will be less likely to engage in behaviours in relation to their mental health difficulties that will put themselves and others at risk. We already have an assertive outreach team and one of the things that came out of the recommendations is that assertive outreach teams need to be embedded across the country. We are proud to say we already have one, but we are looking at our assertive outreach team to ensure that we're continually improving and shoring up our assertive approach. And we have a full action plan, which our board is overseeing at the moment to ensure all of this is embedded. We are absolutely committed to ensuring a person-centred approach to care planning and restrictive practices. Care planning is an area that we have a focus on that really does need some more work. Care planning needs to be absolutely person-centred and really meeting the needs of our service users. What we have recognised through all the audits that we do and what our service users are telling us is that our care planning needs some further work. And that does link into the Culture of Care work as well and equally into objective two, the community work. To do that, we are working again with experts by experience so that we design our care plans in line with what they tell us they want and they need. And we will be working with families as well because families need to be able to input into that. We are supported by the fact that we have now got a fit-for-purpose record-keeping system and that will really significantly help us ensure that we have fit-for-purpose care plans driving the care that we deliver. Our quality objective five continues to build on the superb work that has been, gone on across the organisation in terms of restrictive practice and particularly working with our racialised communities to ensure that they are not overrepresented in our restrictive practices, which include restraint and seclusion. And you may well be aware from previous presentations that we work very closely with SACMA, the Afro-Caribbean charity, who actually have a worker who, whenever any restrictive practice is occurring, particularly restraint and seclusion, they are doing the debriefs and they are working with our service users to hear their voice, to ensure that that is fed back into our reflections and improvement around restrictive practice. Objective six links in very nicely around our Patient and Carer Race Equality Framework. And I'm really proud to announce that we've just launched our very first stakeholder race equality, well, stakeholder oversight group, which is actually comprised of all our stakeholders within the community. And the plan is that it will be a roving meeting that will move around the community and they will hold us to account. We will report to them for delivery of that framework. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. That's a lot of information, very comprehensive, thank you. Any questions? Steve?
A couple of quick questions really, because I've been around the, you know, I used to be on the council governors years ago. I remember those days. I mean, there's significant improvements since two, four, three or four years ago. And one of the issues at the time, when I was on the council governors, was the estate, the condition of the estate in the Longley provision. And I've lost, you know, I'm a bit out of touch now in how that's come on now because a lot of those issues, you know, about, you know, sexual segregation and that kind of thing, were part and parcel of the way the estate was. You know, I remember that coming up in the CQC. And also I see that the CQC visits, you've included, is it two thirteen, is it two one three? In here, a lot better, obviously a lot better than they were back then. But there are still areas, I'm just wondering, the second question I'm asking really is, similar to the question I asked earlier on, the first presentation we had, is we're working through our work programme. What do you see as areas that we, as a scrutiny, health scrutiny subcommittee, should focus our attention on from your perspective?
So in terms of the estate, there's been an incredible amount of work has gone into improvements in the estate on the back of obviously the issues that the CQC did recognise. So all of our adult acute estate is single-sex accommodation, with the exception of the psychiatric intensive care unit, which is mixed gender. But obviously there are separate sleeping areas, et cetera. What we do do in relation to that, if we feel that we need to, we will, we will use an outer-city bed if we feel that actually the risks of a mixed-gender environment wouldn't be appropriate for that particular individual. We've invested a great deal of money into refreshing the estate and ensuring that it's anti-ligature, that it's a therapeutic environment. And actually, it's beautiful, some of the work that's been done. Local artists have helped design some of the artwork within there and on the glasswork and the sort of, you know, visual frames into the doors, et cetera. We've still got work to do on the estate. So as I mentioned, we're doing our Maple Ward at the moment at the Longley. That will open in the autumn. So our male ward that's currently at Michael Carlisle Centre will move across to there. And then we will do a little bit more work and move some of our females back from outer-city back into there because as you are aware, some of our patients had to go out of the city to be able to do the refurbishment work, to have the decantability. We have still got work to do within our older people's estate. There is work ongoing, there has been some work to do, but we still have mixed-gender ward within our older people's estate. Within our forensic, it is all male, so it's, so there isn't the issue of the mixed gender there. From a, from a sort of what can you do as an overview and scrutiny, I guess, I guess it's the capital, isn't it, to be able to continue to do the work? We have a, you know, a comprehensive capital programme, which is kind of rated around kind of the urgency and it's risk-based sort of capital work. And we are moving that forward at pace. But like everyone, we are obviously stymied to some degree in terms of the available capital and what we're allowed to spend on capital per annum.
Thank you. Looking at your priorities for twenty-five, twenty-six, could you sort of put in a nutshell, so when you're selecting priorities, and obviously the whole, the trust is still under requires improvement from CQC. So obviously then focusing in on some areas of improvement is probably somewhat guided by that. But what do you, what do you, in these areas for priority that you've selected, what do you feel is wrong at the moment and what needs addressing? And how, what, just really in a nutshell, if you were going to do a sort of one-page summary of these areas for improvement?
I think in terms of, I think we've come a long way in terms of our culture. I think our culture has really shifted. And I think the biggest area for me is around, I would say, care planning and really ensuring that it's driving the care that we deliver and it's in co-production with our service users and carers. I think embedding that within the organisation will take us a considerable next step forward. There are pockets of really great practice. I don't want you to think that it's across everywhere. What we need to do is learn from where it's working really, really well to ensure that really, you know, we have it all the time excellent across all of our services. I think we've done an incredible amount of work around restrictive practice. But what we are really interested to do is to look at how does restrictions occur in the community? Some of our practice may well be restrictive in a community setting in terms of, you know, maybe even how we organise our, you know, activity of visiting. Are we going at times that actually creates that restriction for someone? They can't engage in, you know, the activities they need to do, particularly around faith, for example? Would that restrict their ability to go to, you know, church or the mosque, et cetera? So there's a great deal of work that we need to do around kind of just thinking a little bit more broadly. I think for me...
There's other people who want to come in, so we could have a whole another meeting on that. It was really just to get a very, so what I've picked up from that is that you want to do further work on the culture shift around co-production and improving services in that way. And more on person centred care is what I picked up from your last bit. Is that fair?
It is.
Yeah, marvelous. Thank you. I'm just going to ask one more question before I go around. Just on patient safety. What's, I wonder, what's your account of how improvements being sought and actioned there? But again, it's probably another meeting, but I think I'll just highlight that for our feedback that it would be, it might be there in the report, but I didn't quite wade through it. And I guess maybe that says something about the report. There is an awful lot of information, quite densely packed in there. So I struggled to pick up sort of your account of how improvements have been sought and actioned in terms of patient safety. There's a lot of tables and stuff, but I didn't perhaps pick up the narrative quite enough. I'll leave that rather than spend the time on addressing it because as I say, it's probably another meeting. councillor Lee.
Thank you. So what I picked up from what you're talking about is that the culture is really, really important, the culture of the whole organisation, you know, from top to bottom. And that is driven by the systems and processes that you're putting in place. And you've mentioned a number of things that are really, really important, particularly seclusion and restraint and so on. And also your assertive outreach teams, whether they should be sort of be more flexible about how they, when they visit patients, when they meet patients and taking into account all sorts of things, not just the religious practices, but you know, the fact that people can't get up in the morning because of all sorts of reasons, maybe medication and whatever. I'm just wondering, you know, in terms of seclusion, that's really gone down and you don't have seclusion rooms on some of the wards. What have you put in place in terms of training for staff to deal with those people who are very distressed, maybe? Or something happens, they need to be dealt with one to one or, you know, with better communication. I mean, you must be doing something, you must be doing some training. Just can you go into that and explain what's happening?
We have a very comprehensive programme of training called Respect. So every member of staff working within those environments has the comprehensive training. It's a four day training and then with a refresher every year. And within that training, we've also built in the human rights element of that. So a lot of it is around the support as well that the Respect teams, the training team deliver. So when we have a service user that's particularly struggling and particularly, you know, sort of complex in their management, we actually wrap around the support to the team as well. So it's not just the training that they have in terms of how to engage in really complex sort of situations, but also wrapping around the live supervision and the live support. So we, every single incident of sort of restricted practice is reported every single day on our Ulysses Incident Reporting System. So we have a system where we pick that up immediately. So we don't even wait to be asked to come in and support. The team actively reach out and we'll be in there supporting. So it's been a mixture of things. It's been embedding debriefs and really working with our service users to understand what would have helped to do things differently. So it's been a range of things. It's not just one size fits all. It's been a range of things that's shifted the culture. And I do think actually if you haven't got a seclusion room, you will actually encourage staff to think differently about how they do things. If you have a seclusion room, I can guarantee you it will generally be used if you don't shift that culture. So there's been a range of things that has taken us to that kind of point where seclusion is not used and is only used when absolutely definitely needed. And, you know, the staff themselves are really proud of that. Thank you.
Councillor Madison?
Thank you. I've got two on later questions. The first one was on the priority about improved community risk management. Quite unsure what that's about, but could it help if maybe give an example or two of what risks you're trying to avert in a sense?
So I guess, I guess the risks are multifactorial. So in terms of the work around reducing the risk on the back of the Valdor Calca and the Nottingham incidents, their focus is particularly around violence, isn't it, and aggression? But our focus is on all risks, so risk to self, risk to others, risk of deterioration. So it's about really understanding that person's needs and risks so that you can wrap around the right support. And that support might be the right number of interventions, you know, frequency of visits. That might be, do I need to take a more assertive approach because they're not engaging? That could be admission to hospital in some instances. It could be access to particular therapies that they need. That risk is very person centred and that's why the important bit is that it's actually personalised care and that care fits around a person. Because often if we're not careful, people fall between camps, they fall between stills. So you can set up your referral criteria for a team, but somebody might not quite fit that. So it's about how we then break down those kind of divisions between teams to think about what care do we put around the individual, not how does the individual fit into our care?
Thank you. And the second question was around equalities. I'm really pleased that although so many of the priorities are focused on equalities and the reference to human rights and so on. I think, well, one question comes up, which you were talking about, single gender practices, which are fine. But obviously that's a problem if someone's gender ambiguous or trans, how do you cater for those people?
Well, it's made it a little bit more complicated with the new legislation ruling. And we are still grappling with that. We have worked really hard to ensure that actually, again, we have a personalised approach to supporting people who are trans and making sure that, you know, transgender patients have their needs met in the right place by the right people. It's going to make it very complicated now that we, you know, with the ruling that we have. So we're going to have to do some, you know, sort of real thinking around that because we would have thought very differently than the new ruling has taken us down.
Thank you.
Can I just ask about out of office, out of office, out of area bed placements? So it says in the report, we've significantly underperformed against our previous trajectories to reduce out of area hospital placements. Just wondered what happened in twenty twenty four to five. It's quite a thing on the chart, isn't it?
Yeah. A range of things I think were in play. I think demand our processes, I think are probably the biggest thing we've identified. We've got a programme called Home First at the moment. And what we're doing in terms of Home First is a number of initiatives. One is that we're looking at our ward processes to make sure that people stay the least amount of time in hospital necessary. So that we are really working to ensure that we identify expected dates of discharge, wrap the right care around people to ensure that they're getting the right care at the right point to ensure that they move forward. But equally connecting in our community services, both to prevent admissions, so strengthening the work that our home treatment team does to be able to prevent admission, ensuring that they are gatekeeping. And by gatekeeping, I mean that they see everybody that needs potential admission to hopefully try and keep them at home. Because for quite a lot of people, home is the better place to be rather than in hospital. There will be a small proportion of people where hospital is absolutely the right place. But more people I think could be remaining at home with the right support wrapped around them. That's what our service users and carers tell us. So we're strengthening all of the processes within our community teams as well to be able to ensure that we wrap the right care at the right time around people. And I think we probably didn't get that as strong as we need to over the last year. And that's where the Home First Programme has really kicked in. And what I would say to you is we have absolutely seen a significant impact from our Home First Programme. And we are seeing the trajectory moving in absolutely the right direction. So I think you will see a better picture coming through in the next quality account.
That's good. And I was going to ask then about the removal of the target of ninety five percent of admissions to be gate kept. But I was going to ask, are you still continuing that practice? But, and so you've just answered that. Yes, you are. Okay, that's great. Thank you. And just, I wanted to mention the family and friends test. And just checking that I've seen the data right, that they're in the ninety percents across the board and have been for some while, which looks really, that looks really good against national averages. But I wondered what happened in February twenty twenty five with a sudden dip to sixty six percent of positive returns, which has recovered to eighty five percent in March. Something's happened there?
Yeah, I think one of the areas we're working on very strongly is actually improving the number of friends and family test completion. We really want to improve the response rates of that. And when you've got lower response rates, you see a dip. And it was, I think it was just a blip in the data across that month because it very quickly came back up. And I think partly that's related to the fact that we need to increase the number of responses that we have across the organisation. We've had a great focus on that from our engagement team. And we're looking at different ways of doing that and how do we engage people in giving their feedback and encourage staff to encourage feedback?
So could that be done a little more hand in hand with the person who, this is done when they've left care. So retrospectively, so is there an opportunity, is there a window there that could be seized before that person has left?
Absolutely.
Does, you know, doesn't have the energy, the capacity, the will to fill in a form?
We, friends and family test is a bit of a blunt instrument. What we have is measures that are much more kind of in the moment that we're actually refining. And there's a dashboard that's coming with the culture of care work to actually have in the moment after every intervention, if patients saw desire to give the feedback on the care that they're receiving and the interaction experience. And what we're looking at is how we can do that as well within the community. Because friends and family test has only got some, you know, it hasn't really got the nuance in that we want. So we're doing a lot of work to improve that. So friends and family test is just one of the instruments that we're using to look at quality and experience.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much then for coming to present and for all your time. I think I would just make a comment that there's an awful lot in the report and it is quite difficult reading. So if there are any ways that you can think to do a kind of, I don't know, some reader tests or something on this kind of report, perhaps just find ways to present the information in a little more narrative form somehow, I don't know. Headings, it might come down to headings or just breaking the information up a little bit. It is quite dense and like quite hard work to read, I found anyway. It might just be me. And just consistency about whether things are presented in tables and graphs or in prose. There was one thing, the Community Mental Health Survey is just presented in prose without a table that shows you that data. So it's just little things like that in the report really. It might be worth maybe a reader's panel to look at it and just see for improvements for next year. Thank you very much. We'll have a quick deliberation, very quick, because we want to get St Luke's up as well. If St Luke's colleagues would like to come up while we're just finishing off that item. So colleagues, is there anything you want to highlight immediately from the Health and Social Care Trust report? Are we happy that we will have noted things down? Again, send your comments by email as quick as you can if you think of anything afterwards. I realise that I haven't done the formal bit. And I've lost my script again. We are requested to note the content of the quality account, discuss and make comments on the report to be fed back to Sheffield Health and Social Care NHS Trust. Are we happy with that? And just hopping back to it, I forgot to do that on that one as well. Exactly the same. Note the content of the quality account, discuss and make comments on the report to be fed back to Sheffield Children's Hospital Trust by the deadline of the sixth of June. Okay, final report then is from St Luke's. So you've brought your quality account, quick presentation. You've got the same time allocation as everyone else, it's just as it starts to tick towards the end, it feels more compressed. But we're doing all right. So if you'd like to introduce yourselves and say what your role is in with St Luke's and then present your report. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Gemma Linton, Chief Exec and Chief Nurse.
Hi, I'm Louise Beard, the Head of Clinical Governance.
Thank you for giving us this opportunity to present our quality account. I'd just like to start by giving you a very brief introduction about the work that St Luke's does. And then we'll move very quickly into the highlights of the quality account. So St Luke's is a registered charity. It provides palliative and end of life care for nearly eighteen hundred patients last year across Sheffield and also supporting families and carers too. We are registered for caring for people eighteen years and above. Although, as you can see in the report on page twenty four, we have started to work with different stakeholders at looking at the transition agenda. We do care for anybody with a palliative diagnosis. Mostly a cancer diagnosis, but our figures are slowly creeping up for referrals being made to us for people with a terminal non-cancer diagnosis. And that is thirty three percent this year, our total caseload. So just to start with some highlights from the chief executive summary. Just to know, there has been a change of chief executive. I was appointed in June of last year as chief executive and chief nurse after being at St Luke's for seventeen years as one of the nursing workforce. We also underwent a CQC inspection of May last year. The report was written in October. And that's where we still was given our outstanding rating, which we were from the previous inspection in two thousand and sixteen. Actually, people are aware nationally, the hospice sector is still significantly financially challenged. Although at St Luke's, I am pleased to say we haven't had to make any reductions in our clinical services or our workforce. We're still very challenged financially, which we will address later in the presentation. I have to say, we feel very fortunate to still be supported by the communities of Sheffield, our stakeholders, our donors, our volunteers and our staff to help build a very hopefully sustainable future. During the early part of this year, in February, we launched our new strategy. Our strategy really centres around a world where patients and families facing terminal illness don't feel alone and receive care and support they need to experience a good death. We focused our strategy on six strategic themes, as you can see on the presentation. I'll just pull out a couple of the themes from each of the strategic themes. So things that we are working on as a team over the next five years, which is our strategy. But my main focus as a chief exec for this year is just making sure that our core services are delivered for twenty twenty five and that we remain financially stable. Some of the themes we're working around improving our care is looking at accessibility for people with, who are facing end of life, thinking about twenty four hour helpline, making sure we look at how accessible our services are for everybody. Looking at new ways of delivering our services within our inpatient unit and also out in the community. And looking at how we work in with other stakeholders around how we identify patients so they come to our services quicker. so they come to our services quicker. Sustaining growth, we're always looking at new ideas around income streams. And also, you know, we're looking at, we do have fifteen shops, what helps support the income for our clinical services. Reaching further and embracing new thinking, we have a very established research gender. We have a research team who do national research in palliative and end-of-life care, but also help the teams look at service development, service improvements. And valuing our people, we have a very established learning development programme for all our working team and also looking at how we support the wellbeing of the people who work within St Luke's by addressing total reward package and different learning opportunities. It's very key that we work in collaboration. Collaboration is a very strong theme through all our strategy. We have developed very robust partnerships with all other healthcare partnerships, but also looking at partnerships with Compassionate Sheffield and other charities like SM4Cs. The servicing activity that we provide, we are a twenty-bedged unit, although I do say slash nineteen. The reason why we say our bed capacity has gone from twenty to nineteen, we have opened a family suite this year and that we've done that by knocking through two adjoining rooms, although the services remain in the room, so if we needed to use it for a patient, we can remove back up to a twenty beds. As you can see from the report, the community work is probably eight, eight per cent of the work of our full caseload at St Luke's. We did over six thousand visits last year and made over fifteen thousand phone calls to patients and families. Our inpatient centre, we had just under three hundred people admitted there. We're a seven-day unit, we provide seven-day care out in the community. We work very hard with our enablement team to try and ensure that people come in purely for symptom management and then go back home. As you can see from the report, only nineteen per cent of the people who were admitted into St Luke's last year were actually discharged home. This is a reduction from thirty three per cent the previous year. What we are finding, this is due to the complexity of the patients that are now coming into St Luke's and also the increase in demand. And also what we are finding, because of the complexity of the patients, it's sometimes difficult to find community providers to support these complex patients within their own homes and nursing homes. Our patient and family support services is our social prescribing service. We had a huge amount of attendance last year, nearly eight thousand four hundred, and that's an increase from twenty per cent from the previous year. We've still got a huge amount of plans to grow this service. We are looking at outreach and taking this service from where it is based, at Ecclesall Road, so out into four areas of the community. As part of this service, we also offer bereavement services and we've also just recently launched a children's and young adult service, just to try and address some of the needs of the children who have been bereaved within St Luke's care. Just to talk about our financial picture, our total running costs are at fourteen point five million, which keep growing. Our clinical services cost us ten million in totality each year. We have set a deficit again for just over half a million, which I appreciate was one of the articles in the Sheffield Star last week. Our previous year, our deficit was one million, so I'm seeing that as a, as some improvement this year, but it still gives us some concern because to keep having such a high deficit is not sustainable long term. And some of the difficulties we've had this year around our finances have obviously been the introduction of the NI costs, the increase in national living wage, and also a concern is the NHS pay awards because we don't follow the same agenda for change, which can potentially impact on our nursing workforce. We do get twenty-three per cent funding still from the NHS and that hasn't changed from previous year. We are self-generating, we have to self-generate income through our retail and our fundraising arm, although this is getting harder to do each year. And now I'd like to pass over to Louise.
Thank you. So I'm just going to talk a little bit more about the research and audit and some of our quality priorities, both review those from last year and then the ones for this year coming forward. So in terms of research, we're very sort of ambitious research strategy at St Luke's and we've always had an element, it's in our constitution, that we're a research organisation to benefit the people of Sheffield. We continue with growth in research activities and that has been shown to attract quite a wide pool of talent. So staff are attracted to come and work at St Luke's, right from consultant level down to some sort of nursing and, and non-academics traditionally. We held our first conference this year, establishing research in hospices off-site, and that was attended by a number of hospices across the country. So we're really sort of shedding light on what benefits other hospices could get from being research active. We had a study at St Luke's called the Chelsea Two Study, and this is again, one of the first sort of more practical studies that we've done, where nurses have been involved and looking at the benefits and or not of giving patients IV fluids at the end of life. We also have a researcher in residence with us now from Sheffield University and she'll be spending a year with us looking at some of the impacts of our social prescribing work. And some of these positions are part-funded by sort of NIHR grants and the universities, but working in that collaboration is hopefully bringing those benefits to us as well. So we, throughout the year, have continued to focus on a lot of our social prescribing activities and you can see that in some of the numbers that we've, we've seen in the quality account, that people and the take-up of those activities continues to increase. We look at tackling healthcare inequalities, inequalities, sorry, through some of the outreach work and we've held sort of more outreach and satellite activities out at Darnall and in the Manor. We've introduced a pre-bereavement counselling service where we work with families before their, their sort of friends and loved ones die, so that recognising that that pre-bereavement can help them post-bereavement as well. And also continuing a lot of workforce development, so right from sort of leadership level, introducing the qualification for Institute of Leadership Management for sort of some of the more operational leadership team, and also encouraging some of the nursing associates to gain their nursing registration and some of the qualified nurses to work to become advanced trainee, advanced clinical practitioners, so that they can go on to then do things like prescribing. As we mentioned, the family suite, so this is, this is a combined suite where families can come and stay over, so rather than just being on a put-me-up bed in, in the patient's room, there's a, a room where they can now use for enablement, so there's sort of a kitchenette, there's an area for sitting and having quality family time together. And we've had twelve families to date, including some of the transition patients, use that suite and we're getting some really positive feedback on that. Mentioning more about the transition, we, we sort of, St Luke's were held a position there, so we were part of a feasibility study commissioned by the ICB around support of transitioned patients with life-limiting and palliative conditions from the children's to the adult services. And that was completed by the Transitional Care Pathway Lead for South Yorkshire. We continue to do some joint working and around learning and development for staff with Sheffield Children's Hospital in Blue Bell Wood and look how we can join up in some of those pathway work. And our nurse consultant based at St Luke's has also helped support eight of those patients in their own homes and also within the hospice. So our priorities for twenty four to twenty five, we have two main priorities. One was to finalise our implementation of the System One project, which is the electronic patient record, and that was rolled out on time in September and went live for both the inpatient centre and our community staff. That was the culmination of one million pounds' worth of investment and, you know, probably two years' worth of hard work and planning to get that online. And the benefits to that are already being seen, not only for St Luke's but also across the city, the way that we work with the district nursing teams, the GPs, it's very much more joined up, more seamless and, and much more of a multidisciplinary approach. We're continuing to develop System One and integrating that and, and working on some of the reporting modules, but also looking at introducing electronic prescribing as part of the System One project.
Just, just slightly aware of time. You could just, maybe just summarise a little bit more through the remaining slides.
Yeah, that's fine. So yeah, just to say the other priority was rolling out the Patient Safety Incident Response Framework, which we did do successfully and we're now using that rather than the Serious Incident Framework. Our priorities for next year, these will be to continue with the partnership working and collaboration, so Jo's also mentioned about the SM4Cs transport and some of the clinic work. Continuing with outreach and establishing more social prescribing across the city in four key sites, which we've identified some of those areas, and looking at how we ensure equity and experience of our patient and delivering different models of care. There's some data in there around our incidents, but there's nothing that I would say is any particular themes or trends outside of what you've probably heard us talk about already. We've not had any spikes in complaints or concerning incidents. And we do continue to try and engage with patients and their families. So we conducted our first place assessment this year and got people from Health Watch as well involved to come and give us their opinion, and that was a national programme where we've achieved over ninety per cent in the country. And also expanded our feedback group. So we're now getting regularly sort of upwards of twenty patients and their families coming and attending that each quarter and working with us to sort of co-design some of the services and give us feedback. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Shall I, shall I kick off? Steve, do you want to?
I have lots of questions, because I think you've covered it all. I'm just curious about the, the trans, transition patients feasibility study. I'm just wondering whether we could have a sort of future feedback on that at some point.
Yeah, that's, we shared it with the ICB board. We were asked to host that piece of work from a collaboration with other South Yorkshire hospices at looking at transition from children from children's hospices or children's services into adult hospices. So the, the report was concluded in March, so it's available to share.
And I suppose the other question I, I have is, you talked about the financial pressures. To what extent do you think that might hinder you in fulfilling the objectives that you've mentioned in the presentation?
I suppose, we, hospice sectors live in a certain world, we, we are self-generating. And so, as I said, we only get twenty-three per cent of our funding from the ICB, which we've just signed a new contract for, so we have got some security there for the next three years. We also get funding from legacies and we know from some of the research that we've done with our data analysts, that the legacies that are given to hospices have grown quite significantly. So this year, we've yielded us quite a lot from our legacies, but it's such an unplanned, unpredictable income stream that we never know from one year to the next what that looks like. But actually, we're doing a lot of work around looking at data and how we, without sounding too brutal, target donors and get them kind of introduced and give to St Luke's. So I'm hoping it won't. And, and my ambition for me this year is that it won't affect what we want to deliver.
Presumably it's down as one of your risks.
Yes, it's on our risk register.
councillor Lee then councillor Madsen.
Yeah, my question's about working with the local organisations and do you think that's an easy task? Do you feel that you, you have knowledge and experience working with all the local organisations that exist within the city? So we are well endowed with people and groups that are looking after others in, in the communities. Is that a well-established side of your, your work or do you need to do more work?
Yes, we are very established at working with different partners. We've just been invited to join the Healthcare Partnership Board, which is new for St Luke's, so it puts us in a position where we are working more closely strategically with other partners across the organisations as well.
councillor Madsen.
Yeah, I have the same questions as councillor Evers actually, but I want to just take them a bit further. So the, the one about the deficit, year-on-year deficit, just, I haven't looked at the accounts, but presumably you have reserves. Are they, is there a risk they're going to run out or does that work?
Yeah, we do have reserves and we also have, we're very fortunate, we have reserves in property equities, so I'd like to say no, they're not going to run out. But it's, you know, nationally, the funding, the picture looks very, very difficult. We have been fortunate to sustain our core services, but every year looks very different. So although our deficit is far better than our previous year of half a million, we know this isn't sustainable. We've only got a set amount of reserves that we can use each year, which will keep us going for the next couple of years. We will get to a point, if we have to keep setting this large deficit, where it will become unsustainable.
And the other question's about transitions, this feasibility study, is there any plans for that to be actually implemented in a wider scale?
Yeah, I'd like to say yes. We're fortunate at St Luke's that some of our workforce are job-trained and that's what allows us to be able to care for some of the younger patients. We have to take this piece of work forward. It is a bold decision, but they're very supportive of us taking this work forward. We have to have discussions with CQC's and other partners about how we fit into that bigger overall picture in Sheffield. And we have got good relationships with the children's and Blue Bell Wood.
Thank you, Jo. Can I start by congratulating you on your outstanding?
Thank you.
You must have put a really grin on your face. And, and just through your chair, thank you for all the work you're doing and all the work you do for the people of Sheffield and outside of Sheffield. I know fundraising is a very important part of your roles and I was, I'm part of your lottery. And what we can do, the only thing we can really do positive regarding that is to encourage other people in Sheffield to get involved, to turn up at events and to carry on supporting you in the way you support us. Thank you, Jo.
Thank you.
Sorry, I agree, Penny. I think in terms of, you're doing a lot of legwork under the fundraising, but yes, maybe there are steps that other people who consider themselves in leadership or influential positions could do to help, to help promote that. I think that's what you're saying, Penny, yeah. Good. Discharges home, for care at home, just slightly curious, when it's, it's hard to find community-based services to support complex patients and ensure they have everything they need if they want to be at home. Is that, do you feel it should be possible? Is that a deficit in available care expertise or are you saying that sometimes it just isn't possible?
I think both, if I'm being honest. We tend to have difficulties with people, the younger population who have very, very complex needs. And sometimes, without getting medical or too technical, for example, like a tracheostomy, it's very difficult to care for people at home who need a suctioning, when they need suctioning there and then. And sometimes trying to find a nursing home for these patients can be quite challenging because of the skills needed to care for these patients. And actually, trying to find a nursing home patient for a patient who's got very complex physical needs, who is under the age of sixty-five, is very challenging as well. We're often faced with key people who tend to be long-term. If they're younger, with very complex symptoms, it's very difficult. And sometimes they're not necessarily palliative, they can be care, but because of the care needs are very complex.
Would, so would, would you look to potentially address that through upskilling of nursing staff, say, or is it, is it just something that has to be, you know, just lived with as it is? Or could there, could there be some upskilling, training opportunities that might help?
So we, through our echo educational programme, we do work very closely with nursing homes in Sheffield and we do deliver a package of training to help upscale the nursing home staff. They're very transient, sometimes you do the training and staff move around and move on. Sometimes you do the training and staff move around and move on. So, but sometimes just some of the, it's, the treatments are very different now, which are great and the opportunities patients have, but that symptom burden becomes more with that longevity. And so sometimes what we're finding is that it's just so difficult, they have to stay with us long-term because of the complexities. So we can be a bit of both.
The family suite, I mean, I'd read about this, I think this is really great. And I know you're always looking for new developments and, you know, new environmental things on the estate that enhance care. I just think this is really great. Could you just expand a little bit on, so who is it offered to? Is there a lot of competition to use this suite? Could you do with more of them? And how, what's the kind of experience from, you know, from the experience of people who have used this so far? What would you say it does to enhance the experience?
So yes, I could do with more, but then that reduces the capacity and another bed. We were fortunate that this project was funded by a private donor. The demand is high, since we opened it in November, it's not been empty. And yes, there is competition. We do have a criteria for when people are coming in. So some of the transition patients who have been 18, 19 have come in. And we've been able to provide that holistic care to not only the patient, but to the families who are caring for the patient. Part of the ambition when we opened it was not just about providing a beautiful space for families, but also looking at enablement work. So that's having to try and support people who are having difficulties with symptoms at home to come in to this space for a targeted amount of time, but also bring their families and carers in to help give them the skills to go and take people back home. So one of the gentlemen who've been in is a gentleman who was quite young but got a very advanced MND. So we worked with him and his family to manage his symptoms, gave him physiotherapy, gave him occupational therapy. And sometimes I can say this because I am a nurse, not everybody needs to see a nurse or a doctor, sometimes it's those other wraparound services that we provide, chaplaincy, psychological support, wellbeing OT, that actually the patients and families come in and benefit from.
Just thinking about, I'm not, it's not a related question, is what goes on there? So there is some new funding that's been announced and 25 million this year, I think, as part of 100 million over two years. So the government's announced new funding, and I understand it's for capital improvements. Have you had any thoughts about how you might utilise any portion of that that you're allocated?
Yeah, so we've had lots of, we've looked at a kind of green agenda and had some solar panels fitted. We're always looking at our environment around how we can improve some of our medical equipment. So we bought what we call cuddle beds, which are beds that go from a single bed into a double bed to allow, for example, we had a gentleman, I'll call him George, who's been married for over 50 years. It gave him the opportunity to be with his wife, where they'd never had a night apart. You know, we use them for young families, people, you know, can spend time on there. So we've spent money on things like the cuddle beds and we have got a programme, what we're looking through, because the money is coming through in instalments that we found out this week. So we've got certain projects each quarter that we'll try with, in line with our new strategy as well.
Thank you. And finally, I think I can squeeze this in, just thinking about your excellent CQC ratings, so outstanding and good ratings across the board, which, that's not, that's not new, is it? You've held that for a little while. I wondered what key strategies you've got in place. Are you confident that you have all the right things in place to maintain those ratings? Or is there anything you would desire to, to help with that?
No, I mean, I think the CQC did assess us on the new single assessment framework. So we were one of the first sites at the start of last year to be assessed in that way. It then took over six months to get our report and the report and its contents, if I say I was a little bit disappointed in the detail and the improvements that they identified, as in not a lot really. The CQC have recognised that, they're going away and looking at what that framework looks like and those 34 quality statements and that there has been some independent recommendation that they reduce those down, but whether that will happen, we don't know. So I think it's, it is a bit of a watch this space for CQC. We continue to gather the evidence, we continue to try and demonstrate how we are improving against some of the objectives set in the strategy with a focus on that quality of care, patient safety and patient experience, trying to keep the teams engaged, you know, and saying they could come at any time, they can request information at any time. But I think then that until they're out of that state of flux and we really know what they're looking for in a, in a sort of clear way, we will just continue to support our staff and improving the way that we are doing.
And you've got everything in place to continue to do that?
Yes, yeah, we do, yeah, we do. I think System One's helped us enormously. We have an incident reporting system that does have capability to do things like risk management, audit, it has a CQC module on it. So we can, we are working to continually sort of roll these things out and develop them and also work with some of the teams to highlight that a lot of the small changes and the small improvements that they probably do without thinking, that's the things that we need highlighting as well as the leadership team, because we don't know everything all of the time. So that's, that's really important for them to showcase that and to share that learning across the organisation with others. I'd like to say well led, just because we've had a change in chief exec over the last year. We've got a very strong leadership team. What we're seeing from some of the new initiatives that we've introduced with the staff and the workforce, that we do a pulse survey every quarter with the staff and around culture, behaviour, trust, and that's significantly improved in the last quarter.
Thank you. Yes, it'll have to be brief, but, and again, I could sit and talk to you all day about it probably, but in terms of expanding outreach and social prescribing, talks about bridging gaps, but in access to services, social prescribing has been a really big strength that, I mean, we've commented on that before. And it's in all the value-added things that you put around the medical care. I think they're just superb. So you're talking about expanding, what might that look like in practice? Where are you looking to go and what kind of things are you wanting to build on?
So with our data analysts, we've looked at some of the hard-to-reach communities. That's why we've already introduced some of the programmes in Darnall Manor and also we're taking the service out next week, actually, out to Stockbridge. Some of the other work that we're looking at is around our, our community assets, as we call them. We have 15 shops across Sheffield and looking at how we can not only provide retail, but also look at how we can develop a community hub. We're hopefully developing and launching our new community hub later in the year. So although it'll be based in one of our shops, it's an opportunity that people can come in as our recognised brand and actually we can sign posts and give people information about some of the services that we provide.
That's pretty good. Is that all from members? Great, thank you so much for coming. Sorry you had to wait till last, but definitely not least.
Thank you.
Thank you ever so much and we'll see you next year. Keep up the good work. Are there any particular comments, members, that you want to highlight? We've written down the things that have been said. Right, okay. Okay, so we are to note the content of the quality account and discuss and make comments on the report to be fed back to St Luke's Hospice. We don't have a deadline. 10th, 10th of June, if we can note, Deborah, thank you. So again, comments as quickly as you can if you want to send anything after the meeting, members. Are we happy to note the content of the report? Okay, good, that's all of our reports. It's always a very intense time of the year, hearing all those quality accounts, there's a lot of food for thought and maybe things that we want to pick up more on throughout the year. So with that in mind, on to the work programme. I'm going to ask Deborah to present what we've got so far for the work programme, bearing on the start of the year.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, this is the first draft of the work programme for this year. And there are still some things missing from this, because I picked up from the minutes of the last meeting, there was a couple of items that need to be added on. As you can see, we've already got a fairly full work programme with a shortlist of additional items that need to be added to a meeting at some point. At the moment, we've got meeting five, which is the January one. We've got that one allocated to a kind of similar format to today, I guess, but around equalities information, where each of the four trusts would be invited to present information on their equalities. So that, I've kind of left the entirety of the meeting for that particular one. All the others have got two items provisionally added to them. Which experience tells us is kind of enough if we're going to, if we're going to give enough coverage to those individual items. But as I said, there are actually some other items that still need to be allocated. So some of them can be done through workshops. So for example, the community, the continuing healthcare item was going to be done via a But as I said, there are already some challenges in terms of allocating everything that we want to cover this year to the meetings that we've got available. The other thing that I wanted to mention under this item, if it's possible, is that we had two working groups last year. One was on dentistry, which has concluded and I will be bringing a report on that as soon as possible. But there is also one on adult autism and ADHD, which has still got some work to do. One of the main pieces of work that they would like to complete, and it was picked up actually during the discussion today, is the, is scrutiny of the all-age autism strategy. And so that, we propose that that working group will continue. The community members have all committed to continuing with that, that working group's activities. But unfortunately, two of the members that left the subcommittee were on that, on that group. So one of the things I would like to ask members to consider is whether they would like to join that working group to continue the work, as I said, specifically around the scrutiny of the all-age autism strategy.
So I think the members from last year's subcommittee who were involved in those working groups can continue on them. But we're keen maybe to have a bit more representation from, from this subcommittee. So I sit on both of those working groups, but if there are any other members who are willing to do that or...
I'm happy to continue on it. I think it's really important, the all-age autism strategy was brought in in 2023, I believe. And it's important to sort of dig into how well it's being implemented and what, you know, and what could be sort of improved really in the way it's being implemented.
So you're willing to continue on that working group?
I'm very happy to carry on.
Okay, if other members are interested, just let Deborah know. I was just going to comment as well, Toby, the questions that you submitted now quite a long time ago, I appreciate, like a year ago, about equalities and so on in, in the work of the trust. So those, those questions have been quite difficult to field. And it's a big ask, I guess, to any of the trusts or to the ICB to, to do that work and produce those figures. However, it has struck me that in the quality accounts, you will see a lot of the information that I think you're after. So you could, as a starting point, I think, probably refer to the four reports that we just looked at, particularly the, the, I'm not so sure about whether there was much in St Luke's about, not much detail was there about equalities, but I don't think you were asking St Luke's, were you in the first place? Anyway, if you go back to the reports and have a good look, for example, in the Sheffield Teaching Hospitals report, you've got section 5.5, just to give you a start, a starting point, section 5.5 in that report and the appendices one and two, which speak to internal staffing, equalities, diversity, inclusion. You might find some of what you're looking for and then if you want to follow up other things from that maybe. So there you go, that's your homework.
Thanks, thanks, yes. I was certainly intending to do a bit more digging.
Yeah, just a good, just a good sweep.
There are the qualities reports, I think, for all the trusts, I think, for all of them, on their websites as well, which I'll intend to look at. And obviously that feeds into the discussion we'll have next January as well. It's an ongoing thing really, isn't it? You know, yeah, thank you.
There you go. So in the spirit of all good teachers, you asked the question, you can do the research. But see, you know, see what you come up with and what questions then remain from, from what you find. I think that's quite a good way forward to, to make sure we do complete on that work. Is there anything anyone would like to raise about the work programme? Steve?
It was a good thing that we did in bringing forward the item on winter pressures, given the briefing that we had last week, I think. And it led me to think that we may have to be a little bit flexible with, with the, with the work programme if we need to swap and change, I think, as we...
Well, Deborah's smiling at that idea, so I guess that's not a problem.
We've got to be a little bit agile.
Thank you, Deborah. Laura?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask if there's been an update yet about the Harrow Street Medical Centre, because that was going to come back, wasn't it? I think.
That's, that was one of the items that I'd just noticed on the minutes that I hadn't picked up, so I'll follow that up and find out what the appropriate timing will be for that.
That'd be great, thank you.
Actually, if, in terms of how spread out our meetings are, if there is any interim update that we need to note from the ICB on that item, rather than wait till September, so would members be happy to receive something in writing if there's something in the interim that we need to see? Yeah, okay, thanks. Good, so I think that, that's, thanks Deborah for preparing that. I think we roughly know what we're doing for the year. Okay, right, well that concludes our business. Then the next meeting is to be held on Thursday, the 11th of September at 10am. Thank you very much for your contributions today, everybody, and see you then.